The First Look Newsletter brings you news headlines from all over Asheville every weekday morning. You can scan it at a glance and see if there's something you've missed or just need to know more about. There are no ads disguised as stories, just the headlines in a quick, easy read. Get the First Look Newsletter for free at podavl.com/newsletter. Three seats on Asheville City Council will be filled in November's general election, but to get there, we need to first get through a small stakes primary. I say small stakes because of the seven candidates on the ballot. Only one will drop off after the March 5th primary. Still, that didn't keep locals from packing citizen vinyl last Tuesday for a casual mixer with the candidates thrown by the Asheville Downtown Association. Six of the seven people running showed up, chatted up prospective voters, and sat down with me for quick conversations about their candidacies. This is The Overlook with Matt Piken, a podcast about the news, arts, issues, and trends of Asheville, North Carolina. In this episode, you'll hear from Aindia Pearson, CJ Domingo, and Kim Roney. You can dial back to Monday's episode to hear my short conversations with Bo Hess, Kevin Frazier, and Sage Turner. The seventh candidate on the ballot, Todd Levin, couldn't be at this event. First up in my conversations is Aindia Pearson.
What inspired you to say, with everything I have going on in my life, I also want to be a city council member? What was the seed of inspiration for that?
It's almost like with me wanting to be in the military. It was something that's always been embedded with me. I'm a community advocate. That is what I do. That's just me. Actually, about seven years ago or so, I had been asked to run. I was heavily in, I've been recognized as one of the women of color leading change in Asheville. I've been a speaker of the Women's March on Asheville. So I was out there at some point, and I got tired. I said, you know what? I'm tired of the politics. When you're involved in things, you start seeing how certain things work. And I was just done and I was tired. And now we fast forward, I've had a lot of things that have happened since then, and most of my children are now older. My oldest is 19, he's about to be 20, and then I have an 18-year-old, and one that's almost 17.
Wow.
And then 12, but then I have a one-year-old. But life is totally different. And so I was asked, would you consider running again? And I was just like, I'm really done with politics. I'm not a politician. And then I really gave some deep thought about it. Because I've been doing this work, why not do it on a larger scale? And so I did. I'm trying.
So talk about the work you've been doing that you see as being particularly helpful or informative in terms of what you would be doing as a city councilperson?
I have worked for a few local nonprofits. I've sat on boards like Pisgah Legal. I've also been on the Residence Council of Asheville Housing Authority. I've been the president in my neighborhood, the Pisgah View Association, Tenant Association, Resident Association. And so I've always just been fighting the good fight for folks. It's just something that's embedded in you. So you can't wake up one day and say, oh, I want to do this, and just say that you're going to be great at whatever, at this type of work. It has to be something that is within you to make you successful.
You brought up a couple of things in your opening remarks I thought were really interesting, one of which you emphasize you want to prioritize residents, which I was reading into that you believe, and I'm not putting words in your mouth, but you tell me if I'm reading this correctly, that you believe the city is emphasizing too much about tourism.
I do. That is my thought. That is my feeling. And at this point, again, there has to be a balance. And I understand we're running a business, but we cannot continue to drive out our locals. We cannot continue to drive out the residents that have been here, that helped to build Asheville. So yes, I believe, again, when I say residents, I'm not trying to exclude anyone, but I want to emphasize the residents that are currently here, the locals, those that are the service workers, those that are not being represented, those that are underrepresented or unrepresented.
What do you think is within the power of a city council or city council member to emphasize residents in a way that isn't happening right now? From your observation, what do you want to underscore or light a flame under in a way that you believe isn't happening or is being diverted in a way that's problematic?
I don't believe that we are investing in our locals enough. I believe we need to invest in our locals more. We need to incentivize. We need to empower. All of those things are what we need to do in our community that we're not doing enough of. I'm not going to say we're not doing it, but it's not enough. I know several different organizations that are not being recognized for the great work that they're doing. I know several people that are on the ground every day doing this work that are not being recognized, but who cannot afford to really live in Asheville outside of housing authority, which is lower-income housing.
Another point you brought up, you're coming about this as through the lens of a mother of five. How do you think that vantage point informs your candidacy and will inform you as a city councilwoman in a way that maybe the existing council may not have that perspective? How do you think specifically that will inform your approach to the job?
Because we know that mothers are nurturing. So mothers are going to nurture, but we also will stand firm. So that's what it is. Let's nurture our community, but we're going to stand firm on certain things because we want you to be your best. And so that's how I bring that, you know?
One of the things I wanted to ask you about was the city's commitment to reparations. A few years ago, it was a big, hot topic. Now, the Racial Justice Coalition and others are still fighting for it. I don't see the same fire under city council or city leaders to get this going. I know there's a broad reparations committee to make this happen. What are your feelings about the progress or process of our city's commitment to reparations?
So I stay away from those type of questions, but what I will say is, I believe in the work that is being done. I leave that to the experts. So that committee, I consider them to be the experts. I feel like we, as city council folks, candidates, whomever, we need to support those efforts. Now, if we see something that's being done illegally or such, we really need to step in at that point. But I believe we need to leave that to the experts.
Everybody in the city has a stake in it, though, right?
Absolutely.
And ultimately, the committee would just make recommendations that the council would pass. They would have to vote on that. And you said you stay away from this. Is there a particular reason you stay away from it?
I feel like it could get very political.
But this is politics, right?
But I'm not into politics per se. I'm not a politician. I'm just me.
Right.
I'm just a regular human that's been out doing the work, that wants to continue to do the work on a higher scale. That's why I don't compare myself to other candidates. I don't say I'm better than this candidate. I say this is how I add to this. And I stay away from the political part of politics.
Got it. What are some of the, you talked a little bit ago about standing up for workers, people who work downtown, who are part of our service industry. Are there areas of funding? Are there ideas you have about how we can help make this city more livable for people who are struggling but yet are vital to the workforce of this city?
Absolutely. First of all, affordable housing. Deeply affordable, fair housing is what is necessary. We really need to set that standard in the city of Asheville of what affordable housing looks like. So part of that is accepting the Housing Choice Vouchers, also known as Section 8 at one point. The Housing Choice Vouchers say, the city of Asheville, this is what we foresee as being successful, accepting 40% of those vouchers. And then the rest are, whatever they may be, flat rate, market rate, or whatever. I think we really need to set that standard. And as far as the industry, the service workers, we have some bigger businesses around here who can afford to pay a living wage. So why not, within the legal parameters, make that some sort of a requirement? Again, you're doing business in our city, but the folks that are working for you can't even afford to live in the city.
Are there things that are on your mind about that we should be emphasizing in terms of developing or opening up more affordable housing that we're not doing so much right now?
I'm wondering why there's so much pushback when it comes to affordable housing. Again, it's going back to setting the standard. I look at Hayward Congregational Church, I see they've created a second entity where they are creating the model of affordable housing. They are accepting about 40% of their units, if I'm not mistaken, is going to accept the Housing Choice Vouchers. Now, if it was that easy, and I'm not saying it was the easiest to do, if it was that easy for this entity to create that, why are we not setting that standard as a city? What is really holding us back from doing that?
Next up is CJ Domingo.
What have you witnessed around city governance, the way things are done here, that inspired you to think, I need to be on that city council?
I have a very long view on that. People who work for the city used to be very proud, very happy. They would emphatically say, I'm a city employee. I'm 15 years in. And for me, seeing people firsthand where they had become so depressed, so dejected, where I had gone after 2008, I had worked a bunch of service industry jobs. I'd worked at a restaurant at Luna's. I had worked as a barista. I had worked doing a grocery store for about nine years. Anyway, so then when I circled back and had time to where I was working downtown again and got to meet folks and talk to folks, it had been such a title change in how people felt. And then, working for the city myself, I got to work for the parking division. And what I found was that any good idea that folks had, people knew there was lots of ways we could improve the city as employees, and many of these programs would not have cost a thing, but there was no interest. And this is actually borne out recently. A report come to the members of the city council where, since so many employees for years have been saying they haven't been heard, they formed a bunch of committees who were supposed to bring that message. And what the overview of that report was is that the committee members are leaving because they still feel the council's not listening to the committees.
What are the things you're hearing on the ground that people think have gotten worse? And what do you believe is in the city council's purview to do something about that they're not doing?
My biggest thing is infrastructure, to steal Todd Levin's line, who I guess he wasn't able to join us here tonight. He bangs that drum, but that has been my central tenet, is infrastructure.
Drill down a little, because infrastructure is a broad umbrella. What do you mean specifically when you're talking about infrastructure and how that can be leveraged?
Oh, thank you. Yeah, so for infrastructure, the biggest thing is all of that fundamental stuff that we need, roads, parking for people who are coming into downtown. We need to make sure the water delivery and recovery system through stormwater are done well. Part of the way the city tried to save money on their budget was they stopped doing as many street sweeps. They rely on folks in the community to say, hey, my street's dirty, please come clean it. And this has had a lot of negative effects for the stormwater division. Some of the folks who are out working in stormwater really hate the fact that we no longer do regular scheduled sweeps. And these sorts of little infrastructure things add up. For example, years ago, the city was told the garages needed over $5 million in repairs. And about that same time, they did that $5 million bus project for the electric buses that, I understand it's a good idea to say, we want to promote electric infrastructure. We already had good hybrid and biodiesel bus systems. And instead of investing that $5 million then, they put it with an unproven company for a part of their green initiative, wasted that money with a company that ended up not delivering for the city and let us all down. And now the garages are going to cost $11.3 million that they want to put in a go-bond this November.
Let's just take that example. Had those buses worked and had that company been responsible, would that have been a strong investment? Because maybe hindsight is 2020. Like, you could not have known, or maybe they could have, but I'm just saying hypothetically, could they have known that this company was going to fall short of the job? And that you only know once they drop the ball, just like with the Ramada Inn, the developer dropped the ball. What can you do differently as a city councilperson? What would you do differently as a city councilperson that isn't being done or done as well as you think it could be done?
So with the way that the buses ended up working, if they had worked absolutely perfectly, everything would be fine. Transit in all municipalities is a money-losing proposition. You want it to be effective for the poorest members of your city, so you will always lose money on buses. And if the electric buses worked perfectly, we would lose less money. But as a council member, what I would have done is I would have said, we cannot take the chance of saying that something that has to be done today, that concrete's rotting, it's falling on cars in Rankin Garage, and over here, it ends up causing quite a few issues with drainage because now, some of the places where you don't want water to go for infrastructural reasons, I actually don't know how much I can say as a former city employee, because I know there's a very important piece of infrastructure that's getting water intrusion because of the lack of fixing. The Wall Street garage has water intrusion issues. So I would have said, if your basement's leaking, you can't really go about saying, I'm losing my heat through my windows because that foundational rot is going to destroy your house faster than your heating bill is going to destroy your house.
You're talking a lot about infrastructure prioritizing. Where would you take money from? There's only an existing pool of money. The state really mandates, we can't raise taxes other than property taxes. So where would you restructure our priorities? What would you drop a little lower on the priority list that you think is maybe getting too much priority to the neglect of city infrastructure? Where would you reconfigure things?
So the biggest one is the fees and charges manuals. Whenever we have a special event, the garage is over at the Civic Center and Rankin Garage. And with SoCon, we're going to be doing this also at Wall Street and Biltmore, or I think they're still doing it at Biltmore, but I know they're doing it at the three. What they're going to do is they're going to raise the price to be $10 as a flat rate. And of that $10, $2 is supposed to go to the Thomas Wolfe Auditorium. The last dollar is supposed to help cover the costs of bringing in extra staff to run the event. However, at the same time that we do that, the surrounding garages are charging $25 to $50, and the Civic Center itself can charge $25 for their VIP, $50 for their silver VIP. And for some of the nicer ones, those can end up being as a trade-off or giving hundreds or thousands to help the event go off. And what I would like to see is, when we do these events, we could actually change the pricing such that when you are participating in an event, you pay a fair price for the event parking. And then, for the folks who are just living and working, who are just there temporarily, right now, they eat that $10. We don't give it back to them. We could give it back. I did a calculation on it, based on the numbers from 2022 and 2023. And again, me working as just on my own, I would have to double-check with the Business Services Division to make sure that all of the personnel costs check out. But based on those 2022, 2023 numbers, we could actually be raising an additional $1 million a year for infrastructure.
Now, you began this conversation by talking about, and I'm paraphrasing here, that there's been a reduction in pride. People used to have a lot more pride around this city, and that's dissipated. Public safety obviously comes into that. That's a huge topic in this city. How do you believe city council has done so far, from your observation, in terms of prioritizing public safety, funding it, and getting the best from city, fire, and other emergency personnel to make this city as safe as it can be? What is happening or not happening that you would like to see changed from your seat on city council?
So first and foremost, I think that while we want to make sure we are building the best public safety response force that we can, some of the things that I like are using community responders to respond to people experiencing health emergencies. I like the idea of encouraging more community traffic enforcement. That's a thing that Raleigh passed last year that I would like to see us invest more in. I think that where we are falling short is that in that interim period, when we ask people to make do without an armed APD officer to respond to many of the, what they consider unnecessary calls, that means that city staff are having to face these problems unaided. And for example, in my time working for Parking Services, when I called APD for help in situations where someone was not able to be reasoned with, where we said, you are causing a disturbance, you're beating on somebody's car, we need you to not be attacking people's cars. Ultimately, we weren't able to reason with the person, called APD, no response came after 45 minutes, and we had to just vacate the area.
But that's also staffing issues, right? At least in the last few years, they've been chronically understaffed. At one point, it was about 40% short of what they're budgeted. Now it's roughly 25% short of what they're budgeted. Again, there are certain things I think that city council can do, certain things that they can't do. What are some roles of city councilpeople that go beyond what you can vote for? Are there certain things that you think would be incumbent upon you as a city councilperson to do that isn't strictly voting?
Yes, absolutely. Because part of that is that pride, that listening thing, feeling like you really belong in the city. There are so many people who feel that they're underserved. So for me, as a city council member, I plan on going out to members of the community to ask them. Because with things like with the Mayor Monroe Diet, I think that overall, that could end up looking like something that we're very proud of we did later. But at the moment, I'm hearing from a lot of people who live there that they felt like they were short-changed. They had it surprised on them. I feel like there should be more of these efforts made by the council to make sure that they are finding these unusual occurrences that they perhaps don't see. A term that I heard a lot when I worked for the city is they called City Hall the Pink Palace. It's where people go and their lives and their problems are different. And this led to, and I don't mean to call out the city council member who said this, I'm not going to name a name, but a city council member said, talking about what the streets and what the parking people do with, they said, I had to go and help clean up a human waste site that had been torn up, and that was a lot. And I think that we need to be paying more attention to it. But despite making that say, when that department said, hey, we'd like to have better glove budget so we can buy the safety equipment we need to be cleaning up these messes, they were denied. And I think that hearing those voices, even if you could just say to them, hey, we can't help you this way, but we're going to connect you with its other resource. For example, the city has a contract with a biohazard cleanup site. We're going to make you in connection with that resource. That was not a thing that they reached out for at all.
And we wrap up this episode with my conversation with Kim Roney, who is about to close her first term as a city councilwoman.
What about your first term do you believe will inform your second in a way that, I want to do something differently this second term than I did the first term?
More after this. Hey, everyone. Matt Piken here from The Overlook, and I'll get back to my conversation in just a moment. But I'm asking you, the listener, yes, you, listening to this very moment, is The Overlook making a difference in your connection to Asheville? Do you know more about what makes this city tick and where we're struggling? If you had to give up one cup of coffee every month to do your part to keep this show going, would you step up? If you answered yes to any of that, and I really hope you did, please join dozens of other listeners by supporting The Overlook with Matt Piken through my Patreon campaign by giving just $5 a month. Give at higher levels and you'll earn free tickets to my live podcasting events. Your support means the world to me and helps keep this show free for anyone to hear. Go to patreon.com/theoverlookpodcast.
Well, that's a great question. Thank you for that. I've been in City Hall since December 9th, 2014 because I was invited by then-councilmember Gordon Smith to advocate for affordable housing. He was really concerned we would end up in affordable housing crisis because no one wanted to build affordable housing in their neighborhood. So he asked me to come speak in public comment and speak to the need of folks who are working in the community not able to afford, at what we called at that time, the workforce housing that was being built. So I've sat in the press row for Asheville FM. I served on boards and commissions. And then, in 2020, I joined council in a Zoom square. And as a classically trained musician who's played in major venues across our country and around the world, no one rehearses to be isolated in a Zoom square. It's impossible to get a feel in the room, like, where is my community at? Who am I serving? I know that I'm not alone, but it is very isolating. And that complicated a lot of conversations in City Hall, in addition to the big challenges that we were facing. So one of the things I've learned is, and I'm grateful for, is that our community is better understanding processes and how we land at conversations. I've worked really hard to get information out on complex conversations like Prodigy Despire or Memorial Stadium. Like, how did I land at the vote that I landed at the end of the day? You only get yes or no, but life isn't just binary like that. So one of the things I hope to continue doing is keep advocating for open meetings policy, make sure that folks have access to the same information that I do as we're about to approach a decision, and invite more people to the conversation. We need more people for boards and commissions and bringing public comment and public engagement. It gives us a better understanding of what people are dealing with on a daily basis. So I'm going to keep pushing for transparency.
I approached this topic in our first conversation about the conversations you have to have in coalition building, even within the city council.
Absolutely.
And talk about lessons you learned. It seemed to me, from the outside looking in, and you can correct me on this if I'm reading this wrong, but there were a lot of votes, or a good number, where you stood out alone in one position or another on a certain vote.
Sure. So two things. One, I realize that in my votes, I may be isolated, but I am never alone. As a representative of working, poor, and compassionate people, I know who sent me to do my job. It's not because things are going great, it's because we want it to be better. I hope that when folks see that I might be alone on an issue, that I will have done my duty to put the information out about how I landed at a place and so we can all share that work together. But when I'm using my courage of saying no, and it takes a lot of courage to do that sometimes, it's because I want to say yes to the things our community needs, to deeply affordable housing, to a public safety response that matches the needs of our community. I'm not saying no because I don't think we should do something. I'm saying yes to what we should be doing. And there's no way to actually do that if I just go along and get along and rubber stamp everything because we want business as usual. Isn't doing us well. It isn't a great service. We deserve better.
But isn't there an element of your work as a city councilperson that is about persuading your fellow councilmembers to see things the way you do?
Absolutely. Sure. We do that at the committee level. I serve on the Boards and Commissions Committee. I was removed from the Environment and Safety Committee.
Why?
Which was wild.
Why were you?
The reasons I can give you is that I asked too many questions about budget plans and policies that were unpopular and difficult to answer.
Who seats members of this committee?
The mayor seats all of the committee.
Okay.
We have six different committees, but I also serve on the Equity Engagement Committee. So when we're talking about strategic partnership funds, how, if we cared about violence among our youth, if we cared about the opportunity gap that's impacting Black students in our schools, we would fund the solutions that are on the ground, proven to work, relational responses in community. We get $1.1 to $3 million requests for strategic partnerships to do exactly that work. We only have $240,000. I would say, through that work and through our work plan setting, I definitely make a case. But I don't just make it by myself. I make a relational case. I build coalition. I'm a community organizer. So I'm going to talk to teachers. I'm going to talk to parents. I'm going to talk to students and try to help all of us make a case to council, not just me, so that we can get to four votes. At the Equity Engagement Committee, we got a unanimous support to find more strategic partnership funds to address these issues that our youth are facing. Two months later, we heard that staff was confused and didn't understand the vote. So we had to revote to find more funding. And then, two months later, we got an update that there was not going to be a staff recommendation to find more funding for strategic partnership funds. At the end of the day, if I end up in a situation where we're not prioritizing what we should, at the end of the day, it may look like a no. But it's because I've given a really clear answer of what yes looks like.
I didn't know that you were removed from a committee and you cited for asking too many questions. That has to hit you at a fork in the road. Either you know you're on the right track by asking these questions and be damned, I'm going to keep asking questions, and that's how I'm going to serve as a city councilperson.
Oh, you see this happening in New York, too, because councilmembers are being removed for the exact same reasons. Here's what I made a promise to, because I care about the women that I serve with and my fellow councilmembers and our staff. Whether I'm on council or I'm on a committee, I pay property taxes in this town, and my students are growing up in this town. I'm never going to stop asking questions. I'm never going to stop bringing solutions. And I'm going to be really clear about what we should say yes to.
You have a very clear vision of the issues that are your priorities. Have those shifted just in the past couple of years? What would you say now about your priorities that might not have been your answers in 2022?
First off the bat is affordability. So when I was first running, I said affordable housing. And then, it shifted to deeply affordable housing. Now, it's been pointed out to me, this is an artistic term. It's a lyrical language. It's not a legal language. What I mean by that is housing for the people who live and work in Asheville who can't afford the housing we're building. The new Thrive report shows us that because of income disparity, Black, Brown, and Indigenous people, but especially Black women, are not able to access the housing we're building that we call affordable housing. So we need to change our policies so that we're incentivizing housing at 60% of the area median income and below. So for people making between $12 and $15 an hour. And until we're doing that, we can say equitable, affordable housing is a strategic goal of council, which we have agreed to, but we're not going to get to the equity part of affordable housing. That has shifted for me this year to talk about affordability in general. Because if you can access housing, but you can't afford the car to get there, that means having a car is a prerequisite to housing and jobs and education, and we deserve better than that. We know from the data that we're looking at for transportation in North Carolina that in the next 10 years, 12% of North Carolinians won't have access to driving a car. Or they won't be able to afford it. They won't be able to drive it. They'll be too young to drive. So we would be leaving behind a huge part of our population from being able to access the housing we're building. So transportation is a growing cost. You have other costs of living that are too high, childcare costs. That's not something the city necessarily does. That's more of the county's role. But are there facilities or are there barriers to facilities through our code that make it difficult to provide childcare options in neighborhoods? But a big, huge one was informed by the water outage. During the water outage at the end of the last holiday season, I spent nine days helping people flush toilets because we weren't providing water for people to flush. We were providing water for people to drink. I was able to communicate this need for folks in Spanish and using Google Translate and Russian and with our Ukrainian neighbors. That was a big challenge. But because I spent nine days helping people to flush toilets, I realized that I was right to have voted against raising residential water rates. I knew that we were putting this on the back of the residents. And now our new study shows that residential water... And now our new study shows that residential water rate payers have been subsidizing the largest commercial accounts to the tune of 40%. The suggestion from the study shows that we need to raise the Tier 2 and commercial water rates by 40% as soon as possible, or we're not going to be able to afford the infrastructure or leverage the bonds. We need to keep the water on. That's a public health issue. Not having the water on isn't good for business either. So we're going to have to do something about affordability, addressing the water rates so we're paying our fair share in water rates, having renewable energy options, having transportation options in addition to housing, because that's how you have resilient neighborhoods and communities.
That wraps up part two from The City Council Candidate Mixer at Citizen Vinyl, put on by the Asheville Downtown Association. You can turn back one click in your podcasting app to hear part one from this event, featuring my conversations with Bo Hess, Kevin Frazier, and Sage Turner. If you value The Overlook's place in Asheville's media landscape, please consider joining dozens of others who are supporting the show through my Patreon crowdfunding page. Become a member for as little as $5 a month. Visit patreon.com/theoverlookpodcast. Our First Look newsletter gives you just a handful of daily headlines from around the local media landscape to get you on your morning. We also have a weekly newsletter devoted to all things The Overlook that hits you every Friday. Both are free and available at podavl.com/newsletter. The theme song for The Overlook: Maker's Song comes to us courtesy of the Asheville duo The Resonant Rogues. The Overlook is a production of Podcast Asheville. New episodes come out every Monday, Wednesday, and Friday, wherever you get your podcasts. You can find us on any social media channel at AVLOverlook. And I'll see you on the next episode of The Overlook with Matt Pike.